Let me take a deep breath. Yeah, we thank for another day of life, Lord. We thank for all you do folks, Lord. Pray for all the people that have been harmed during all the storms, the bad weather, the tornadoes, specifically in Mississippi. We pray for the volunteers and people that are helping them. We pray for our county. Pray for our leadership. Just be with us in this meeting. We just thank for another day of life. Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thanks, Charles. Thanks for listening to the minutes for our last meeting. Steve Seager.
The Newton County Board of Supervisors met in a regular first of the month meeting in their boardroom at Newton County Courthouse in Decatur, Mississippi on the sixth day of January twenty twenty at ten o'clock a.m. George Hayes voiced the opening prayer. Sheriff Jody Pennington opened the meeting as prescribed by law. Present for the meeting included Father Charles Godwin, President of the Board, Joe Alexander, Kenneth Harris, Charles Mould, Jackie Johnson. George Hayes, clerk of the Board, Jason Mangle, Attorney, Steve Sale, County Administrator were also present. Joe Alexander made a motion. Kenneth Harris voiced a second to the motion to approve the minutes as corrected as of December nineteen twenty nineteen. The motion carried unanimously. Charles Moulds made a motion. Kenneth Harris voiced a second to the motion to approve the docket as presented and recommended about the control of the motion carried unanimously. Current contract with Patient Care Logistics Solutions Mississippi LLC was set to expire on twelve thirty-one twenty nineteen. An extension was negotiated for one additional month. The new contract will expire on January thirty-first twenty twenty. The cost will be five thousand dollars. A copy of the extension is included in these minutes. Noted. Delinquent justice court fines for the month of November twenty-first were, it should be twenty-first through December twentieth, were four hundred and twenty-five dollars forty-two cents. American municipal service collections for the same period were three hundred and thirty-eight dollars eighty-nine cents. There were one hundred and seventy-eight new cases opened during that period with fines an amount of forty-seven thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars levy. Three thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars fifty cents from the new cases were collected. There were thirty-six dismissals for the period. Kenneth Harris made a motion. Joe Alexander voiced a second to the motion to replace Glenn Hollingsworth with Jackie Johnson at two-three-six-seven-eight Highway eighty, Chunky, Mississippi, as a board member of East Central Planning and Development District. The motion carried unanimously. Charles Moulds made a motion. Joe Alexander voiced a second to the motion to authorize county administrator, let's see, how should that read? authorize county administrator to accept a low quote for financing twenty-twenty Dodge Charger costing twenty-three thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and ten cents for a three-year term. Bancorp South bid three point one seven percent. Their bid was received six days before Bank First, who bid three point one seven percent. Administrator chose Bancorp South as their bid was received six days before Bank First. Motion carried unanimously. Noted. Leonard Cooksey from East Central Planning Development District contacted the administrator to see if the county was interested in applying for a CEBG grant. Page two. Joe Alexander made a motion. Kenneth Harris voiced a second to authorize Sheriff Jody Pennington to apply for a JAG grant for handheld intoxicants. The cost would be five thousand dollars. The grant would pay three thousand seven fifty. The county would be responsible for one thousand two fifty. These funds will become obseged funds. The motion carried unanimously. Noted. Governor has declared Monday, January twentieth, be a holiday of observance for Robert E. Lee and Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Noted. Mitchell Thomas resigned his position as one of the public defenders for circuit court. Judge Duncan has appointed Wade White to field that position on a monthly salary of four thousand twenty-eight dollars twenty-seven cents and a monthly expense allowance of six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Newton County's monthly share will be twenty percent of the total with Lincoln Sherwood Scott County's paying the remainder. A copy of the judge's orders is included in the minutes. Two MAS scholarships in the amount of five hundred dollars each may be applied for by relatives of current retired county employees who are high school seniors or current college students. Deadline applies February first twenty twenty. Employee changes. Chris Hollingsworth, Sheriff's Office guaranteed salary fifty thousand. Matt Atkinson, Sheriff's Office guaranteed salary of forty-three thousand. Ben Kelly, Sheriff's Office guaranteed salary of forty-five thousand. Freddie Gentry guaranteed salary of forty-five thousand. Max Downs, a full-time deputy, thirty-five thousand per year. Pete Peirman, Sheriff's Office resigned twelve twenty-three. Michael Chambers, nine-one-one, resigned twelve nineteen to return to school. His last day of work will be December thirty-first. Jody Pennington discussed operation of the Newton County Sheriff's Office. The sheriff also discussed the E E Q grant for solid waste officers to deal with inmate garbage pickup. Noted. Dwayne Stanford, county engineer, brought a new contract for bridge inspection for boards to review. The board agreed to leave Dwayne as inspector. Noted. David Marshall, mayor of the town of Decatur, met with the board concerning the dispatching fees for the town. The town has not paid claims since the county started sending bills in August twenty nineteen. The board advised the mayor the dispatching fee would remain as proposed, and the mayor said he would present that fact to the Board of Alderman of Decatur. The amount is one thousand four hundred and three dollars per month or sixteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars per year. Joe Alexander made a motion. Kenneth Harris voiced a second to the motion to increase the rental fees from fifty dollars to one hundred dollars for voting precincts where rental fees are charged. The motion carried unanimously. Page three. Joe Alexander made a motion. Charles Moulds voiced a second to the motion to approve travel for Brian Taylor and Caleb Rice on January twenty-eighth for pipeline safety training to show the county. Brian to Mema Meeting in Pearl on January twenty-fourth, and Brian to radiological training in Meridian on January twenty-seventh. The motion carried unanimously. The board discussed with the Newton County Fire Coordinator, Brian Taylor, and the board attorney, Jason Mangle, possibility of the county attorney title to fire trucks located in fire districts over to the fire departments within these districts after the trucks have been paid for. Noted. The county administrator will check to see what's happened to the garbage body that was supposed to have been sold to Trax Plus. Kenneth Harris made a motion. Jackie Johnson voiced a second to the motion to advertise for surplus timber of the Newton County landfill. Advertising to be run in the Newton County Appeal on the fifteenth, twenty-second of January and open on February the third. The motion carried unanimously. Jackie Johnson made a motion. Charles Godwin voiced a second to the motion to appoint Billy Joe Everett as receiving clerk and J.R. Addy as requisition clerk for B five. The motion carried unanimously. Kenneth Harris made a motion to close the board meeting to see if an executive session on personnel was necessary. The room was cleared itself of board attorney, the board, county administrator, and chancellor clerk. Joe Alexander made a motion to enter into executive session on personnel. Same group as above were present. The motion carried unanimously. Joe Alexander made a motion. Charles Moulds voiced a second to the motion to come out of the executive session with no action taken. The motion carried unanimously. Noted. Made then during Newton County Tax Assessor and Collector to be on the January sixteenth twenty twenty board agenda. Joe Alexander made a motion. Charles Moulds voiced a second to the motion to have all department heads to total all cobbles on time sheets which are turned into the payroll office. This must be completed before payroll checks can be completed. The motion carried unanimously. Page four. Joe Alexander made a motion. Charles Moulds voiced a second to the motion to rehire all county and state employees that were employed as of December thirty-first. The motion carried unanimously. Noted. B five has hired Kenny Addy and J.R. Addy as full-time employees. Charles Moulds made a motion. Joe Alexander voiced a second to the motion to rehire Jason Mangle as board attorney, Steve Sale as county administrator, Dwayne Stanford as county engineer, George Hayes and Steve Sale as inventory clerks, with Hayes being the certified clerk. The motion carried unanimously. Charles Moulds made a motion. Kenneth Harris voiced a second to the motion to give Alfonso Morgan a dollar per hour raise. Charles Godwin resigned as board president. Glenn Hollingsworth was vice president and did not seek reelection. Joe Alexander made a motion. Charles Moulds voiced a second to the motion to elect Kenneth Harris president of the board and Jackie Johnson vice president of the Newton County Board of Supervisors for the twenty-twenty year. The motion carried unanimously. Noted. B five supervisor Jackie Johnson advised the board that he would be on Blue Cleveland's property on the corner of Hurst and Strubeck Road checking soil for possible dirt pit. Kenneth Harris made a motion. Charles Moulds voiced a second to the motion to recess until January sixteen twenty twenty at nine a.m. The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Steve. You prefer to read another minute, so there are corrections on page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Can we get a motion text? Seven minutes.
So we're...
All of the papers signed. I mean, raise your hand. Joe, come on up.
How are we doing? How are you doing?
Morning, morning. Uh, yeah. Four things I'm just good today. Uh, I guess the first one would be hiring all according to Fred Hawes from the county fire best of.
That your recommendation?
Yes.
I make a motion to rehire, let Jody be allowed to hire Fred.
He's gonna hire. Boy, I just gotta make it our best.
Boy, can we appoint Fred.
We'll get a second.
The Maserati that was.
That'll be at a hundred and sixty-five dollars, sixty cents by week.
Being authorized that season, uh, late last year or last year, we were going to use Trax Plus to, uh, spend the, surplus profit we're going to use Trax Plus, but they're going to use Dinko now. It's better than you were trying to kind of get for the call. The board approval, if you don't mind, to go to Dinko instead of Trax Plus.
We'll get a motion.
So we...
Second. All in favor?
When is that motion?
I'll have to call him.
Call him at March.
I think it is. I think it is March. Not the way they. The Tiger Commissary has had some discrepancies in it. That's the company we use for being jailed, for the canteen, for the, uh, getting supplies to jail. We have, I don't want the discrepancies of there. Last year, we're trying to get it straightened out. The state officers, like I'm trying to help get it straightened out. We need to move some money over from what we have in the canteen. That property, right to pay what we've not paid in invoices for last year. If we're working with them to get everything straightened out, measure it instead of. The money is there already. It's related to Trump. Percent of what we get from Tiger. We'll pick a lot of anybody, everything up again, come back to Hamilton.
Where is Tiger? Where the out of, uh, Lake Tennessee off?
What he's asking for is a special docket, and we've got three or four items if y'all want to go ahead and consider that. Forty-nine thousand four hundred to bridge construction from B two bridge, fund one sixty-two, two thousand.
Is that on that though?
This is on.
High project to Julie?
This is on Harrison.
Okay.
Two thousand sixty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents to Tiger Commissary from Sheriff's Canteen, fund number one thirteen. Charles Moulds wants to purchase a truck, and he's paying nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty out of his B three road fund. Fund number one thirty, Southern Trucks Equipment, and nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty from his B three bridge fund, fund number one sixty-three.
We'll get a motion to that favor. We run a special now.
I make a motion to approve special docket design.
Second. All in favor?
Last I have, or we dropped the last time with the D E Q grant for paying salary, pay salary for, uh, deputy to be out with inmates on state inmate's hand account, or pick up on state road hand account. Talked with Steve, and he said money is there to pay the salary for the employee. What we'll have to do is that on the DOT agreement that we have, they pay ten dollars an hour for the guys out there with, with inmate pick up trash. And what we'll do, I don't know how much money I have to put a pension to it, but whatever money we would take that we've got from DOT, we'll put back into the fund to help, I guess, supplement the salary from the D E Q. So it would be fully one hundred percent funded by, we get something to help back out. It's helping us, helping y'all pick up trash on state county roads also.
Joe, is that ten dollars gonna be for a forty-hour week for fifty-two weeks, as they were?
They say, excuse me, they say on the DOT agreement, we gotta pick up trash on state highways at least seven hours a day for three days a week. So that's what that money would be.
So would they only pay for three days a week then?
Yes, that's correct.
They're gonna pay for twenty-one hours?
Yes, that's correct.
Two hundred and ten dollars a week?
Yep.
How much is that D E Q grant, Steve?
Nineteen thousand. So that's, uh, roughly eleven thousand from the M dot rent. Looking twenty-nine thousand, so you're gonna be short six or seven thousand. That's what you and I talked about.
What are we looking at? Sorry, I was.
Is, to be honest with you, I'm wanting higher scouts with. You know, he's already D E Q, has any D E Q certifications.
I don't think I can, but.
I'm trusting. And, and with the D E Q grant, you have to have, uh, for someone to be, to be the inspector or trustee for illegal dump sites, it's gotta be D E Q or, or cert. And so he doesn't have to, he's already got the court's certification.
Okay. You ask, what's?
Sounds okay.
Guess what the salary be?
The salary, uh, Steve and I thought it'd be his same salary they made now.
Okay, so we're...
I'm not exactly what it is. It's thirty.
This is the only deal?
It's thirty-something. And he'd be responsible for taking inmates out for the state, for the state hand account records and for doing this.
So we might not use all of the D E Q grant there, because that's a catch.
Correct, yeah. Didn't Steve say we had last meeting, had D E Q grant hold already, or did he say we had two more?
I don't know, maybe I want to say.
I think I'll, I'll ask questions, Steve.
We got you. We got you.
You and I talked a little bit last night. You told me, told me about potential.
Right.
And honestly, I haven't any time to think of it real bad, but as I'm speaking now, again, we're talking about being able to pick up on state highways in, in Newton County. Wouldn't be on interstate.
No, no.
We're going to verify whether or not this includes state aid bill,
Correct.
which would be wonderful if it does.
Correct.
My question is, with the weather like we've had the last forty weeks, what are we gonna do? Are these inmates coming, put on rain slicker from the out to pick up?
Depending on if it's twenty degrees, probably not. Uh, if it's something like this, probably not.
Sixty degrees and just trees and rain, you get together.
Yes.
Effectivity, I think I asked you a question last time, as far as inmates, and I know you said something about it, Joe, or something.
Yeah, we're getting that worked out for the next term of court to ensure that we have inmates have to jail to actually do this. We've got inmates down here now. We've got three that I can put on their right now.
Sure.
Put on more than three to do them, yeah.
For such.
I, I don't think having inmates to do the work is gonna be a problem.
Unfortunate.
Yeah.
But those, those inmates, they, don't they have to sign a release form to work? Don't they?
They do. They also been in their plea agreement also.
What do they get for working on that? What will they get as far as? Time.
Good idea of a time.
Yeah.
What the, what Ranke County does is they, someone that's fixing a plea to a non-biased crime, which is a felony, but it's non-biased, what Ranke County does, they got their sergeant judges and their D A. office. And they will offer the person that's fixing the plea, uh, with the plea deal, look, you can stay here. You can, let's say you're gonna get four years, but they're gonna give them the options to stay in the county jail for four years instead of going to D O C. And I, if it were me, I would much rather go and stay in the county jail than go to D O C. Uh, it keeps them pretty much in their own county. They can see their family every weekend there in Vista Isle. The, what's been going on with D O C right now, I'd say the atmosphere of county jail is a lot better than state, than state considered. Uh, there are a lot of pluses for them to stay in the county jails if they're going to D O C. At the same time, uh, you don't have D O C telling you how to run your jail and put some money on and stuff like that. These guys are not state inmates, but once the four years is served, they'll go back to Florida, Joe, and Joe, you should have served.
Okay, so they're, they will not be state inmates?
Correct.
Okay. We have a lot of illegal dump sites. How are we gonna handle that with the county supplies, equipment to cling up those illegal dump sites?
If they're too big for the inmates to, to pick up, we'd have to look at that, you know, we know that. Uh, if there's something that inmates, man, we could.
Question of the problem, I mean, we got, we got, we got quite a few of them.
Yeah.
But I would like to know their response from, um, they gonna be able to pick up on our county state aid road other than the fifteen, the five oh three, the five oh four, that, that's something I would like to know.
Yeah, dude, you will. I don't have an answer to that for you, but I'll get you one.
Yeah, like you and I talked about, you know, as good as it is, as good as it sounds, two days every five weeks in a beat, if, if you're not gonna be able to pick up on state aid roads over the three days.
Correct.
That's not a lot of time. And on our county roads, I think we have more problems with the trash than we do with state. The state.
But it's everywhere here today.
It's everywhere, but I think our county roads are worse than state roads.
And it may be. The, the way I'm looking at it, two days are better than nothing. That's the way I'm looking at it. And if we got the, the manpower to get it picked up, that's why I wanted to do it, so.
What cost? Go ahead, Steve.
The cost of beats will be about six hundred dollars a month, so I guess y'all split it like you do everything else. Ten percent and pay sixty dollars a month.
So this is not coming out of general fund?
Not if it's on the road.
So, so we're talking about the matching part to the grant? Is that what we're talking about?
No, this would make up the rest of the salary.
Well, that's my point. We're, we're starting with the grant.
Starting with the grant.
Let's say we use sixteen of that nineteen, then the beats will have to match sixteen. If that's what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
So that's not coming out of general. Where is this ten dollar going then that comes from M dot? Ten dollars an hour. Where's that money going?
I don't, I don't know if you can match one rent for another rent. That's what I'm saying you need to talk to them about.
Well, they're gonna pay us ten dollars per hour, an hour, whatever account we set.
That's what I'm asking. Can that not, can that not go toward offsetting each of the beach's expense?
Yeah, but still, you're still.
We're gonna be out some, I reckon that's that.
That's, that's what I'm trying to tell you. Still gonna be out some.
We're gonna be out the six hundred dollars a month from the board.
About.
So you're...
And that's the way we figure it?
So y'all agree?
The, the E Q grant matches fifty percent of the salary.
Correct, that's matching rent.
Correct. And, uh, and so if the M dot pays eleven thousand dollars, then you, it's closer to eight thousand that you know how to match. So that's, that's around six hundred and fifty dollars a month that would come out of these.
We are returning the salary, I think Steve was gonna.
I didn't know. What, what is the salary?
The man there trying to steal the property too.
Did he sit right there?
Oh, well, you certainly did. You certainly did, too.
Thirty-six, eight fifty-seven.
Thirty-six, eight fifty-seven.
Yeah.
Do you have that contract? Uh, do you have to do a contract with?
Yeah, we feel, we signed a contract in December, and we're still waiting for them to get their response back from the state, I guess, okay, through D E T yet.
About eighteen-four from the grant, eighteen-four from us.
Which, about eleven, didn't it say eleven would come from M dot?
Yes, dear one.
So the rush land, ten thousand. So you look at six hundred a month that would come out of these.
Little. Ten thousand, remember?
Yeah, split.
Seven to. Never heard.
I got ten thousand.
Two weeks.
Four hundred.
And there'll be. Say six hundred beach set a month?
Two days. It would be six hundred total, about six hundred, six hundred and fifty total.
For all five beaches.
So what's your, what are you paying on? Twenty percent?
He's, he's done my road mileage.
Yeah, when you split the, when y'all split everything, yours is like twenty percent, Kenny's around ten?
Oh, oh, I would, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm all with you.
By road mileage.
So Kenny's. Is that how we're gonna do?
That's up to y'all. That's the way I was suggesting. That's how you go with my road mileage, you're looking at picking up. That's strictly up to y'all.
Go by day, you wouldn't know.
We're gonna have to sign a lot of days.
Same amount of days, they're not gonna pick any more up from me than they are from Kenny, so I'll see why you work like a road mileage necker.
Well, you throw mileage, everything else, but, uh, I agree with what you say, but that carries me to, that I won't get into. But, uh, and I mean, that's fair, what you're saying. I mean, I.
We're gonna split by ways?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. But I, before I vote to do this, I'd like to have more information. I'd like to see that contract, and I'd like to know about the state aid roads and all of that before I vote to say, yeah, let's do it. Let your mileage, you know, I just give one vote.
Yeah, I'm all for it.
I can get you the, the agreement with, the agreement more is considered how many times, what hours they gotta work, how many days they gotta work, what they supply, but I get you that.
Well, I mean, I'll leave a copy. I just wanna know about the state.
The state aid roads, that's a big, that's a big part of this, I think.
Yeah.
Because I get.
We'll get a lot more out of it if they can.
Exactly.
We have to live. Work those three days in that out of each.
That, that hundred and something dollars a month that it's gonna cost each of us, we'll get a lot more out of it if we're picking up on state aid roads too versus just the county road.
I agree.
Now, what those, uh, M D O P supplies?
M D O P T supplies, van. They're gonna give us a van, a trailer, the men working signs.
They're gonna give you a trailer?
Yes. The men working signs, uh, the gloves, trash bags, and, and everything.
Everything.
Providing, yeah. Anything you would need.
This sounds good to me.
Yeah. If y'all want, give me just a few minutes and Google somebody else, and I'm gonna find out how to switch. Does that work?
Well, if the boy wanna go on this without.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, should we be wasting the hand motors and?
If you talk to both of you.
I did not get a whole job, but.
I'm sure they'd be forward, but I.
I talked to Moulds yesterday. He said he would be for a trial basis.
Trial.
Okay, contract. Is there a timely living on the contract?
If we knew what it'd be.
On the hill, so that would be a nine basis. And I don't think Joe had a problem with it. I mean, it's.
So what's your? If you could make me make a call and clarify that state aid side?
Absolutely.
Think that would be a better warm and fuzzy thing.
That's the last thing I have. Let me get, I'll be on your business.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Let me, let me ask.
Yes.
When would Scott be moving over then? Are we talking like tomorrow, or we're gonna need to talk about the landfill? Are we talking like tomorrow, or we're gonna need to talk about the landfill manager replacements too, so that does come into play.
Well, seeing, we haven't got the paperwork for the okay from the state yet from M. D. O. T. So, once we get that, and I don't know, it may be this week, maybe another month, I'm not sure, so it's, no, I don't immediately need it.
It's not going to happen in the next ten days.
I wouldn't, I think so.
Okay.
And you said you just get.
Three quarters. Yes. In the, um, next quarter.
I get back.
Thank y'all. I think Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Take care.
Judge. Yes, sir, sirs. Just kinda wanna hop in formally, introduce myself before the bonnie. Um, I'm not gonna take up most of your time, I know y'all got important matters to do, but I just wanted to let the board know that I am in the courthouse. Obviously, my office is on the other end, it's open, my offices, office door remains open, so if anybody individually needs to come and seek, ask for some help or assistance in the matter, I'm certainly more than willing to do that. And as a board, I'm more than willing to help in any way that I possibly can and able to. Um, I appreciate what y'all do, I appreciate how difficult some of the decisions come across, and I thank you all for, for asking the motors to let you make that decision. The fire hydrant is currently really heavy on me right now, but I appreciate being back in Newton County, I'm very happy to be back in Newton County. And so, I think that, um, in past, especially those recently, everything was centric towards the Chauka County. But they circuits four counties, and I think all four counties need to be involved in some way. So, with that, if anybody has any questions for me right now, I'd be more than happy to answer anything, but.
I, I, I may be out of line here, but I would like to ask Judge if he heard what the sheriff was saying about inmates.
I caught the tail end of it.
I think he may have already spoken with you about.
We, we.
Working inmates, do you see that as a real?
I don't know enough information to give a qualified opinion on it, I'm just being truthful about that. That may have sounded like a lawyer answer, but.
That's a damn mistake.
Thank you, Judge, good to see you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Judge.
No, sir, I'm just here.
He doesn't learn.
I'm just here to listen.
Scott, you wanna see.
Learn in the short road.
Come join me.
No, I wouldn't say that, I wanna finish well.
That's it, that's it, show off him.
I didn't say you wouldn't finish well. We're gonna miss you, sir.
Well, thank you. Got just a couple of quick things, landfill related this morning, um.
Oh, you're trying to jump to your part.
I'm sorry. We talked on that for just a while? Do we, a whole lot more depth this thing than we realize, and I've been trying to stay, it's just in my spare rainy daytime. Some of what we're doing right now with this illegal dump site cleanup, you know, we've been trying to do that out there, and it's just hard for me as one to go and do it. We call on your guys a lot, we do some of these things already, this Kenny up there, we talk about the same one all the time. Um, it's something that needs to be done, can be done, um, you know, both with using inmate help and I just didn't want time to carry it, was two weeks ago, about twelve hundred pounds. I mean, I got a call on it, took a look at it, uh, called the D. P. W. guys to get the clown truck out here and let's pick his stuff up, well, they're afraid of the cost. On these illegal dump site cleanups, we, we weigh the cost of that to get the stuff up, it's plastics and trash bags, things of that nature. This happened to be a swimming pool and some winter furniture that was just thrown on Robert's truck, which is inside the city limits of here. And I did, I just, had a little time, we, we picked it up, we got it up, or I said, they do, or they did, and we got it out there, got it disposed of. We've been trying to do some of these things already, but it's just hard not, you know, every day focusing on that, uh, to do. But you mentioned using some county equipment, dump trucks, some of that stuff's gonna be too heavy for these inmates to pick up. Now, this is dump site cleanup, not just road, what I'm saying, this thing's a whole lot more depth, you know? And there was some additional money in there, that's what I just brought the barrel in, I didn't wanna interrupt, and here, but there's a little bit more money available in there. Again, I haven't read that thing one hundred percent to fully throw everything out of it, but y'all, y'all got it before you.
Yep, some of those cracks in that paper, I already, I already know about.
Yeah, the ten dollar amount that he's talking about, the, uh, M. Dot, I'm unclear on that, 'cause you know I only come from M. Dot down there, I know the, uh, trash lady, Lita Chris, she called her, it's Miss Connie Matt Mullin down there. And she's gonna be the go-to person, uh, to get you kicked off, start in there, find out what's available, and to make that determination between state highway and, uh, State A. Road. I, I'm uncertain on that, I can't answer yes or no on that. But we've also got, uh, point contact in Pearl for solid waste enforcement. Again, I may have to open up the can on this when I started talking to him way back, and just say, hey, here's who you need to go to, points contact, and that kind of broke. But it's a lot too, um.
That, that, that solid waste grant?
Seventeen thousand dollars, nineteen thousand, one hundred and one dollars something, yeah.
Yep, so. Trying to top. We need, I, I got this question, Steve, okay, we have the waste card, right?
That's.
We're, we're getting it, yes. That won't interfere with that in it.
Okay.
No. We've got an amnesty day grant that we applied for last year, we've still not used, so we got that one, and then we've got the nineteen thousand sitting here that we've not applied for yet. It's, it's, it's not.
April, end of April on that for the, um.
Yeah, we got to April to decide what to do, yeah. It's a non-competitive, so it's basically a budget for the.
So some of those grants in that paper that you have, a lot of those are competitive grants, aren't they?
Yes.
Competitive and, and on that, that's correct.
Um, so let me clarify too, using this money, would that take away our amnesty day? Unless we fund it ourselves?
Well, you can apply, you can either apply competitively or competitively for it, or you can use the non-competitive grant for it. We, we get an appropriation each year, and it's usually sixteen to nineteen.
This is the nineteen we're talking about?
Yeah, that's non-competitive.
So again, if, if this is used for salary, we would not have a amnesty day with it?
You will have one this year, but the next year, you'll have to decide whether you want to apply.
That's what you're saying, we've got the nineteen thousand in the bank, so to speak.
Yeah.
For the amnesty day.
We got it from last year, we bought it from a grant last year, we're, we've got another year to spend it. So we've got an amnesty day that we can use this year, plus this grant, it's, we're not.
Roll around to next year, what does that do to us?
You'll have a grant that comes in, and you can either use it for solid waste officer or amnesty day, and then you'll have to turn around and apply for a competitive grant for amnesty day or solid waste officer.
Okay, okay.
Or you can split what you get.
And usually it costs about ten to twelve thousand to get one of these.
I'm thinking last year we spent around fourteen thousand, that's how late.
Just for the habit of cleaning up, the guys come out, George.
And I'm getting, I'm asking too many questions, I guess, but if we didn't have the one-day amnesty day like we have, and people brought that same material to the landfill. Can we hold that at some point and let those hazardous waste people come pick that up, and if so, what kind of cost would that be?
I guess it would fall under the same, uh, same standard operating procedure right now, is if someone shows up, someone, or something that they think may be hazardous, I have to make a call on it to D. E. Q. Normally, it's outdated chemicals, things of that nature, you and I have talked about some of that stuff, uh, normally they have me read what I can off the way, and say, ah, that's gonna be okay, you can dispose of that.
And so I'm wondering, my question, I'm just wondering if we do not have the.
Yeah, we said that.
I mean, as far as the biggest things we catch on our amnesty day is tires. And we're getting tired, and I mean, I get a hundred of them every two weeks, of course, some of that, I'm looking into that right now, some of that, and y'all know.
What I'm really asking is the amnesty day really giving us that much mileage?
Well, so how many tons do you?
I, I'd have to go back and pull the paperwork on that.
Do you think it's a lot or a little, or what you get?
It's, it's pretty expensive for what we get.
Yes.
Kind of what I've, what I've been through, I didn't.
I mean, and, and the stuff you're getting, your, 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 your elderly people are gonna bring you your paints, your chemicals, that, and it's just shed stuff that, that accumulates over time.
And, uh, and that's the type of stuff that can be disposed of already.
That's correct, you know, if we, if we can identify.
And there would be no reason we couldn't basically do an amnesty day and say, hey, you bring this at no cost to you.
That's correct, and then if we identify something that we think may be, cannot be buried in that landfill and/or transported to the Kemper Camp, then that's where I gotta make a call on that. And I'd say, I'd say, I've spent some time thus far, they've said, oh, you're good on that, you can, you can dispose of it.
We might even have three amnesty days a year where people can come on Saturday morning and bring over two of them.
I mean, you do get some cleanup.
Okay, alright.
On that, on that side note, uh, I mean, I think we need to know if D. E. Q. will allow that on this grant. I mean, if you call it an amnesty day grant, but you're not having amnesty day, obviously.
Yeah, you still follow them. That's another thing, what I'm checking between these two here, there's a lot more boxes gotta be checked to qualify than just inmates picking up garbage. It's, it's pretty deep, I mean, it's.
The grant that we've got sitting there can be used for amnesty day, can be used for site cleanup, can be used for solid waste officer, we have to identify what we want.
That's why I thought, that's pretty much clear, I'm questioning.
I guess, again, what I was trying to say was, we could have amnesty day at the landfill, and not have it at the Chauka.
And that's something that I kinda wanna do, I just fell in on the way it was, I mean, we're having to double handle stuff, basically, where if it's coming in there a lot, if it can be disposed of on site, out of those trucks.
Wouldn't have a problem doing it that way.
Yeah, and I do have the room there, we're already on it.
I mean, it saves a lot of money. Because you'll have to get it out.
But again, if there's any more questions, anybody wants to get off land, I'll, I'll cover, we can get into that, oh. Uh, as far as landfill managers, the timber cut, I don't think, was it supposed to hit today's paper?
Yesterday.
Yeah, or yesterday, that's all I remember.
I don't think.
I, I don't.
I'm not seeing the paper, don't know that.
I, I don't remember seeing it, and I went through it real quick, but I received one call from one cutter, or hauler, logging, and I'm gonna reach out personally to some of, so y'all aware of this? But there's, uh, they're unclear on, is it the twenty-two acres, that's where I got, the, the next sale, future sale's gonna have to go in. But they're asking about the property across the road, is that to be cut too? And I paid the truth, I don't know what we discussed on that when all this first come up. Main thing I'm primarily concerned with is where the future sale's gotta be, that across the road, not gonna be considered in this future sale, but it's, if they're cutting this, you can.
How we wrote it up, that'd be.
I just, again, I don't remember.
I think it was twenty-something acres, is what I was.
That's how I identified it, 'cause weighing on the survey, that's roughly what it come out to, uh, give or take a few, we're dealing with that wetland down there, they gotta stand off.
We ought to get interested in small traffic.
But just a, a bullet to throw out on there, when the timber does get cut, and we do get over there and start doing some rub and clearing, you know, there's another site for county to, all the dirt we excavate. I'll be pulling some naturally, but it's available, the more we pull out there, the less will have to be cut out for light rail. So, it's, uh, offered inside to be used for that. And we got our dirt left in this last haul we had, we've still got a good bit of that, and it's gonna carry over, but we're always gonna need dirt. You know, just, it's part of the rule that you have to do to stand it, uh, for the cover. But there again, just wanted everybody to know that there's, that's availability of dirt right there for all the beats. Um, knowing on the ESCO slag, if anybody's hauling any of that, I'm definitely, definitely need some of that. Uh, Alvin was really good to help me out, uh, last year, but this sawdust haul we're going through right now, that stuff doesn't, it holds, it holds more moisture than what this ESCO dirt's holding. And the big trucks I got coming in and out, we're, I'm over there just about every Saturday before I'm out now. And I mean, you know, just, they're, they're good stuff, they can help it, and rain we've had, it's, um, nature of the beast. So if anybody gets in the hauling business, and I can get some, I'm able to that. Do have a new driver slated to start possibly end of next week, and if I do, gonna try to keep Bill around, this part-timer, to possibly, if I can borrow a dump truck, I can haul some myself. You know, granted, I can borrow somebody's truck. Uh, and then again, just throwing that one out there, uh.
How many loads you talking?
No, Lord, I kinda told Alvin when he said how many, I said, as long as the gate's open, you can get in here, I'll sell you seven o'clock, and I, that's what, yeah, I mean. Again, we don't need as critical as dirt, but right now, I had, we had pretty much undercut that road, uh, a little bit last week, and go down there and dig some, because these. Some of those trucks coming in, twenty-two tons roughly, and imagine how wet and that weight, and him having to make that turn, his just turn, so. We, we undercut, put a little in there, and I'm already getting into kind of a bear bank of what I'm robbing from, so I'm on the, I mean, one load would be stupid, ten loads would be great. It's not one thing.
Right, because Jasper County, on that ESCO slag.
Yes.
Jasper County went to D. E. Q., they've been hauling and hauling and hauling it, so if, uh, we need to get it, you need to get it, cause they're, they're.
Well, D. E. Q., they're about, again, y'all know this from y'all previous years here, it's, they're always back and forth, it has to be considered used, as far as out, out here, high-traffic areas. Well, that's my road to get in and out, and they say that's not a high-use road. Yes, it is, I mean, it's daily traffic, six days a week, to get to the backside of the landfill. So we kind of combat that with that, um, last board meeting, since we pushed this back, uh, we're fixing to have, consider buying another garbage truck. Might want to consider us taking bids, uh, or opening back up for it. The previous one I got started to really show its age, that'd be the twenty-fifteen freightliner that I've got. Western Star trucks have been running, have been pretty good trucks, again, not trying to just let us what we want, again, we gotta go by the bids, but, uh, the, um, um. Hold on, I'm trying to think of it, just a second, uh, the twenty-fifteen, I understand we're going to do a three-year runout on the trucks, greatly from our own, that's the, and buy oldest truck that I've got, and that's.
This is just what we got on lease purchase.
Oh, okay, 'cause I, I've got two trucks, and I don't, I've got that number.
This is just what we have on lease.
I've got, actually on hand, a twenty-twelve and a twenty-thirteen that I'm gonna rob a compactor from, and again, they're gonna call, I've got a truck, I will have one once we remove the compactor. Compactor, I have to go automatic and be refitted, that's, we found that to be the cheapest way, it's a fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, depending on what all wrong with it, to refit, new hoses, new pump, paint job. Puts me out of commission for about two or three weeks with that backup truck, but once it gets back, it is a good-looking bid, and it, I haven't had any problems with the last two to take refit. But again, some of the board might want to consider that we're, they're getting bigged up pretty bad. Uh, and we talked about this last time, this guy.
I mean, we have six trucks with compactors on them.
No, we have five, we have three mains and two reserved trucks.
We got a twenty-eighteen Western Star, a twenty-nineteen Western Star.
And, you know, the last truck I bought was a full walk before, it's all, uh, but that's the walk before truck.
We, we have the two thousand eight.
No, no. Whoa, 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 yeah, the two thousand eight, that's the one I just picked, I'm sorry, that's the one we bought for the walk before truck. That's why we helped off of buying a truck, uh, last year, because we got in that bind with our haul.
That two thousand eight is, is the tractor, it does.
That's correct, that's correct.
We got eighteen, a nineteen, a twelve, and a thirteen, and a fifteen.
Right, I've actually got two older trucks than that twenty-fifteen freightliner, another one, either truck zero, truck two, I'm getting ready to rob a bid from.
The twelve and the thirteen both have garbage.
That's correct. See, we refit, you'll get, you'll wear out two trucks from one compact.
We got five.
Five trucks, yes.
You want to replace the twelve and the thirteen?
Yes, because the twenty-fifteen that I'm running right now as a main, it's the one that's really starting, I'm having to pull it off-road once a month, it's lights, a lot of electronic stuff. And it's the one that I wanna pull out and make. And it's the one that I wanna pull out and make the main backup truck. It's still a good truck, it's just we're having to work on it, off and on now. Uh, a lot of electrical issues with it, and it's just the checking it goes through. I mean, you understand these trucks are running four days a week, roughly a hundred and forty, fifty miles a route. That's four days a week. Uh, it's just starting to show its age. And when I have to back it up with that twenty-twelve, the old thirteen, after two or three days of them running, one of them's gonna cause up a problem. And that's all I have to mention.
So, do your quick.
Current landfill, I forgot to bring this, another thing covered up. Uh, our class one permit expires July, thirty-one July, twenty-twenty-five. That's what the life expectancy of that current sale I'm on right now. I don't think we're gonna make twenty-twenty-five with that sale, and this is sawdust. Now, it's a trade-off there. Sawed us money, but sawed us also shorten the life of that sale.
As Deac said, didn't think much of elevations.
Now, we can build up, if that's where you're going with this, and we've already looked at that. If we do have to build up, once I reach, uh, completion of the westward boundary, once we re, reach our current elevation, we will build up. And I'm gonna start on that far west end, because in the future, with the new site going on, and the new ground, we're talking about cutting timber, if you build up there, you're gonna lose visibility of it. And with equipment operating down there here in the day, I like people to be able to at least see what's going on if there's an accident. It's just a safety precaution. And not to mention the public coming in and out. Sometimes they get stuck, they go the wrong direction, uh.
Yeah. I don't know if this changed or not, but I know when I was certified for that, the slope, it was always said that the maintaining of this slope, as long as you could maintain it, you could climb with it, just like the other landfill.
That's correct. The one that's immediately westward of the, uh.
Well, we messed up on that one. We didn't keep the ground level.
But the height, that's what I'm getting at. I think, you know, we can, we could build up on that other one. And we're gonna have to, if we don't have this other one, you know, after timber's cut, you're talking grubbing operations gotta go on, then some dirt excavated out, both for y'all's use or use of the building, you know. That is, and that thing's gotta be cut down, your buffer tested, uh, and it's a lot to look at on that. But again, I just, I would not wanna build that one up there on that end so high where you lost visibility of your working operation and just the general public down there, cause they get down there and scrounge and go through things. And if you lose sight of it, build up, you're gonna lose sight of it. And our class two permit, we never did hear back from them on that, so we're just hoping to continue, cause that thing's passed along, it's been in the county here for, since October. And I mean, there, I'm probably ten loads a week, and then get out.
Class two and the water permit and the transportation, the transport permit.
Yeah.
We have three that they never replied.
Right. And that's, you've got engineers that change hands up there, and I didn't hear anything different at the last conference on that.
So you say it's your contract for the class one rubber side just running out. What do, what's the process of?
Well, yeah, we'll reply, i- if we're still on that, but with the current intake of this sawdust we're getting, I don't think we're gonna reach the, the life expectancy. It's gonna, sooner or later, it's not gonna make the time on the years.
Okay, what else?
Actually, that's it, Jim.
Okay. Tony.
I talked to DOT and it does conclude state address.
So, you're going, I hope you're on the get base, you're on the supplies on it.
I got in touch with everybody except for Charles.
Well, he's gonna drive out to his place.
He, he presented.
Oh, he stood up?
Yeah, he said.
Yes.
Remember?
Yes. President, I'd make a motion to relax, share opinion, uh, entering this contract with DOT to provide the land and trailer and whatever else they provide to the county. Also, they can be able to take deputies out in Canada, state roads, state roads, pick up trucks. Seven days a week, twelve hours a day.
And also, and also, best be, you know, I'm sorry.
Awesome. All the same.
Thank you, Governor, we appreciate it.
One more question on that. Okay, now, I pick up lock-offs in my community and I find names about time. And perhaps I turned them in, but they never went anywhere.
It's going to work. Charlie had a college yesterday, I think there were like forty bags of garbage down there. Didn't want to make contact, should've had till dark, they get all picked up.
I'll let y'all know more, I'll work that, but I bet it's gonna work out.
If it doesn't, they won't be in jail, I can tell you that.
If we'll do things like that, we'll see it there. There'll be less trash for the inmates to pick up. And we got.
For the north's consequences, that's.
Yeah.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, appreciate it. Ms. Cook, please.
Hello, good morning, Yadda Man. I'm with, thank you. I'm with Central Planning, nice to meet you.
Plea, please.
But you can. Thank you. On behalf of our director, Mike Lott, and the staff of Central Planning in the Valley District, thank you for allowing us to continue to work with Newton County on lots of different projects, and we look forward to another four years or many more working with the county. Uh, the reason I'm here today is I've talked to Steve about a couple of upcoming grant deadlines, and he suggested that I come and talk to the board. Um, the biggest one, of course, is the CDBG grant. That's the grant from Mississippi Development Authority with HOE funds to benefit low and moderate income people. Those applications are due May twenty-second. They're due May twenty-second. As a county, you can apply for up to six hundred thousand dollars. Um, but it is a, you are required to put in match, and the more, the more match you put in, the more points you get. Uh, like I said, it has to benefit low and moderate income persons. Some of the different things we've done with other counties, uh, you can do fire stations, you can't do fire vehicles. I know you need some trucks, but they don't allow trucks under that program anymore. You can do, uh, community services that benefit low-income people, like we did the Senior Citizen Center, Department of Health, DHS, something like that. Um, you can do, uh, head-up sensibility of county-owned buildings. Uh, and you can do roads. If it's a road with a minimum of fifty-one percent low and moderate income, you can do a road. Uh, part of your match can be in kind. So, a lot of times if they do do, do roads or anything like that, there's, there's some work you can do, you can catch your, um, employees and your equipment. Obviously, we're just getting started on those. They're due in May. We have our application workshop next week. We don't anticipate any changes.
You know, financial.
Sure.
Back on the road.
Yes, sir.
Uh, needs to be fifty-one percent.
A minimum of fifty-one percent low income.
Fifty-one percent. Now, that road would have to be brought up to state aid specifications.
That's what they say. That's what they say.
Would that, would us bringing that road up to state aid specifications be a part of our match, or is that outside of our match?
No, I mean, you, you would, say you did all the prep work, contracted, but paving or whatever. Yeah, that's fine. That would be your match. We did, um, I just closed out a road in Lee County last year, and we were nowhere located that road is.
Yes.
To lowhead them, or to lowhead them. Um, they did all the prep work, and that's how they did their match, and then they contracted for, um.
Paying.
Paying. I'm trying to think if you get it, but yeah, for paving, they contracted that for paving. Uh, to determine your low mod, because you don't beat any, uh, low mod by set, so she would have to do an order of survey. So we can provide a certain form, it's based on income.
That would be up to us to do.
Yes, sir. You would have to do the survey. So if you had, you have to eighty percent, eighty-five percent. So if you had a hundred houses, you'd have to eighty-five, but.
Is there, is there a minimum number of houses?
Yes, sir. So, if you figure out, uh, have a road.
What's that on, uh, income figure?
Let me see if I have the current one with me. But, uh, like I said, we don't, I brought you some surveys, but we don't know if they're gonna change any of that next week when we go, if it's been updated for the new year. Yeah, this is, I think this is current. For Newton County, um, their income has to be below twenty-six, three fifty for one person, thirty-one hun, thirty thousand one hundred for two, thirty-three, eight fifty for three, and then it goes up based on the number of people in the household.
About the road, the, the, the.
It's not, can't, that just affects low and moderate income persons.
The inmates are.
There's a whole big controversy about county inmates as low income. Uh, but, yeah, that's, that, I know that's one thing we didn't, you and I talked about, but, uh, those are some of the things.
That's good info.
So we, we have, you know, we have a lot of it. We would have to advertise with engineer upfront.
So we can't use our engineer?
You have to advertise with engineer, take proposals, and then select one.
We have a lot of, we're, we're good.
Uh, you have to have a public hearing, um, you know, and then there's other things you have to do for the application to handle all that part. But anyway, just let us, if you let us know. Do you wanna pop for something? I know you're trying to short-handed here today, so just let us know something on that. Um, I think the other, there are a couple of other ones that I think Steve has talked to you about, is why my official department has recreation rents coming due. We have recreational trail program, which is due in February. That's for trails and trailside facilities. That can be for exercise, multi-use, nature, anything like that. And you, that's an eighty-twenty grant, maximum grant's a hundred and twenty, which you have to put in thirty, and you can do in kind. It is a reimbursable grant.
Just a maximum hundred and twenty thousand?
Hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant, and you have to put in thirty if you got a hundred and twenty. You can do in kind on that as well, equipped with, uh, employees and equipment. And it's a reimbursal, so you have to do the, uh, entire project, you can reimburse it then. Uh, we are looking, you guys gonna be applying for one?
For a while.
They're gonna be applying for a trail at, at ESCO, like to put, like put a trail at ESCO. ESCO Park.
Round.
Oh, oh, oh. Sorry, ESCO Park. Yeah, he, he's gonna be applying for one to ESCO Park.
My poor will.
But then, okay, so you can do, uh, it doesn't have to be a hundred and twenty, that's just your maximum. We've got a lot of different.
And put a trail across the road.
Good, uh, look.
Huh? Think about that. Think about that.
Uh, the second recreational program is the Land Water Conservation Fund. Um, that's a fifty-fifty program, up to five hundred thousand. Um, only part of your in kind, only part of your match, your fifty percent would be in kind. Um, that's for any recreation. So ball fields, playgrounds, splash pads, anything like that. Those applications are due May the twenty-first.
Max, no splash pads today.
Yeah, I think you have plenty of splashing today.
But all of this profit is happening to be counting on?
Counting on, yes, sir. Um, the, uh, those will be May twenty-first, uh, but they are for funding for twenty-twenty-one. You will not know until March of twenty-one if you're gonna be funded.
Competitive?
Yes, sir, they're competitive. Um, and that again is a reimbursable grant. You have to complete it before you're being reimbursed.
The low-income grant, what was that deadline?
Now, the low-income for CDBG, that is May twenty-second. But we would need to know, no letter in the first of March to get everything done. We'd have to get done.
Do you just, do the Star Lady, do you have to do the plot?
If you give us, uh, nine-one address, we can put it on there.
Just nine-one.
Yeah, we got, I mean, are there physical addresses?
I have nothing of those in the wild. They're, they're pretty times. The plotting and all that.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, and then, and we, we can, we can do some pretty big ones pretty quick if we have to, but we like to not have to be.
The one I'm thinking is, is, is not very large at all.
Well, that road we did in Lee County, it's in, um, so.
I looked at one y'all did in Jasper County quite a few years ago, where the, but then my road was back out that way, I would look that.
What, the county road?
It's been a few years ago, but.
Yeah, that's big, cause I don't remember doing one. I know we did one in, um, what was Buster Hammond's district? I don't know which one. Got a stranger. I know we did one out there, Jennifer's got one up there. Did one out there several years ago.
Close to Haven.
Close to Haven. That's a, that's an old, that's an old, it's a, old, long time ago, Haven. Um, the last thing I wanna talk about is I have sheriff's lift, okay. I, I met with the sheriff and.
You didn't wanna talk in front?
No, I just, not even still here, he might wanna pipe in. I met with the sheriff and, uh, his, some of his officers, uh, were working by four New Years, and we talked about grant funding and trying to get some more funding for the Sheriff's Department. Uh, this is the Justice Assistant Grant, Steve just signed it, I think he approved. This is gonna be for some intoxicizers, trying to get enough intoxicizers to have one in every car. And we'll get that submitted and.
We got a question, I don't know what we got to ask. What are those, what's the cost of those everything? Do you know?
Uh, I don't have, it's.
I don't know.
I think it's three hundred and seventy-five.
So, how many were you getting?
You're getting thirteen. For five thousand dollars, you're applying for thirteen intoxicizers with the full kit that comes with them, and then two extra cases of the math bases, which you have to have a math tape out there. Um, so we, we worked on that. Um, he asked about DUI grants. Uh, in the patch, Newton County had a DUI officer, but several years ago, I think he stopped getting that. So he had asked about applying for a DUI officer. Those, those grants are being released February third. I don't know what the date is or when they're due, but he is expressed interest in, in doing that, and, uh, we're, uh, contributing. With the DUI officer, it pays for their salary benefits, but they do have to work nights and weekends when they're anticipating having DUI, more DUIs. That's when they like longer work. We have to, they have to turn in a lot of paperwork, want a training. It also can possibly do a little overtime, so like when you have the drives over or get pulled over, derive a lot of special periods, they come, you see on the news and everything, so that you have extra overtime for the other officers to assist you.
I think that was heavy paperwork.
It is a very heavy, heavy paperwork. You have to turn in every ticket and every home sheet and.
Make a trip to Jackson, everything.
Um, and he also, we also discussed, they're also taking, at that time when they take the seatbelt, seatbelt, they go to occupant protection, which is seatbelt and child restraint. They'll take those at the same time. And what, what most people use that for, they won't go in the officer for that, but they use that to do overtime for a clicker ticket and those sort of things that, that you normally do to help pay some of your overtime costs. So when I hit the date and when that's due, I'll get back to the sheriff and, and Steve, and y'all up there, don't they, that's no problem. Um, he asked about both the vests, that's that fifty-fifty grant. Uh, those are probably gonna be taken in April or May. So we'll, we'll let you know about that. And the final thing is the Voca grant. I don't know if he's talked to you all about the Voca grant, Victims of Crime Act, that grant. This is a grant to employ a victim services coordinator. Uh, City of Newton has been, has been the only entity that has had this grant in the past. They no longer have it, and I think the sheriff has talked to some people. The money comes from Department of Health, and he has talked to some people, and they are interested in Newton County applying to get the program back, and it pays for the salary coordinator, for training, for the coordinator and your officers, um, dealing with victims, special victims of, uh, child, uh, spousal, or sexual abuse, or crimes. Uh, it helps, uh, coordinate services, but the coordinator would, you know, be able to help people that are victims of crime, help get you connected to services they might need, or can use, and follow up with it. So, uh, those are due next month, and, uh, he is, you know, he's asking about applying for the, looking back.
Do you have the paperwork? Do y'all have the paperwork?
I, I, it's an online, I have, yeah. So we'll, I'm gonna, just, just wanna kind of update you on that. I don't know exactly how much. It's, that's an eighty-twenty grant. Um, so I don't know exactly how much he was looking to apply for. Because we had, I got into that, but he's talked to Newton County, has some information they've used, they did theirs.
Steve, if you look in, I think you can find a time to look into that grant and, uh, just see what it entails to. What else you got for us, Miss?
I think that's all of the grants I have today that I know about. Is there anything that I need to be looking for, uh, that you need some assistance with? I know I would use one.
Yeah, we need some.
Better not match it.
Better not match it, that's hard to find, Dean, well, take that far, not change.
We need gifts, not grants.
I gave each of you a copy of the piece of the planning district board. Did you want to make any more changes? If not, I was going to give another, a change of name. I've tried to change some of these because they're not active, but it's active economy, so I don't even work, work with it anymore. Only some dollars just.
All right, I'll do that, Ms. Chapman? Thank you, thank you. I'll know where I am if you need it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, and, uh, the City Association of Planning and Development Districts Conference is the last week in April, so last Tuesday, everyone, we would love for y'all to come join us again this year. But then, no watch.
When does the registration happen?
I don't know. Go to nsppds.org or dot com, or you should be able to see that. You should be getting that file that they send out every year from, from the state organization. Exactly, you two, um, maybe just like a downtown, y'all both on the front page, we'll sit in the back.
Oh, really?
Yes, and time of the line.
Okay.
Oh, and that ruined it?
Look at that, isn't it?
Oh, y'all with the capital, yeah, open up a paper, like.
Can't believe Tyler found a photographer.
You had to run that out there on your own.
Thanks, Winella.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Ms. Bender.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi. Hi. Flowed always in water.
We're going to have to take a roll over. Use my rest. Flowed between the two, uh, what you call, culverts now.
So played like a control.
Where's, where's she?
Oh, Alonzo Williams, off Stanford.
Okay.
We lowered the hog, so, got that.
Yeah, I saw that, that was close.
You should correct.
Okay, I'm working it, thank you for that call. Okay, oh, let's start with this. I got one that I need on the minutes about boarding my land sale. We had a home state chargeback that go to the land sale. And what happened was it's a father and son with the same name. The dad was deceased. At the time that the home state chargeback came back, we put it on the son. Now, the son is deceased, but we need to correct this because we had wrong. I need to board that sale and, and pay the buyer back, and that's on Edward Watson, Jr. And I have your copy, Steve, from me.
Let's, let's go ahead and take care of that now, can we get a motion to avoid that tax sale?
No, I'm looking at it.
Second.
On the recommendation of the tax assessment, all in favor?
Okay, oh. Now, that's what changed, you know, we can, oh, open books. We're gonna catch you before you go, we're gonna get it past this point. Do you see some of them on there? Most of them are, you know, fairly new, but I think I got one in there. It might not be on this one, but there it is, it might be on there. I think it's out there.
That was fine.
If I read, well, just never came back in. And they're wanting to get a refund, I told them, I said, you can't get a refund, I can see what we're working on, but I can't do nothing about what's already been done. That pisses the power. Their paperwork is getting so hard to read. That adjustment that we had to make on it. We sent the bills out and she called us back, but she had it down where the recap goes. You know, I mean, print on a printer. All this stuff up top is supposed to be what we assess, and then down here is a recap on the bottom. Well, this piece was at the bottom, right near the recap, so we didn't, we didn't take it in. For the very reason that I didn't want to have to take it in and then turn around and take it off, coming back up here, but then I had to plus it back in, so I'm still in the same boat, I didn't make anything in there. And on this cloud house, they sending in a rendition with the, um, inventories on it. And that's the little vape shop that was right down the street, right here. Sending an inventory, then she amended the inventory that she had, and before we had a chance to talk to her, she was out there. So.
In track and creek road?
No, no, right here, right, right down the street.
They're not over.
Not vape, vape.
Vape, okay.
Vape. No, 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 no. But, you know, I'm hopeful that we might hit this page since she's closed already.
It's a long.
That's the change of that. Any questions on this?
Not quite sure.
Take your time.
Just to show, uh, on the right page, just, just showing the changes in the, uh, value of the partial.
Right, the top half is the home state corrections where they were over sixty-five or on social security disability and did not get signed for last year, we have to make the correction. You can only correct what you're working on, you can't go back and give them credit for something that's already done. The bottom half is the railroad trade, changes and corrections, and then the back page is my personal progress.
When do I need to come in and do it?
And when did, when did you turn sixty-five, sir?
Last year.
You need to come in, you went nine, Washington first.
Well, I will be there when I get this meeting.
I'm making a motion to accept my report here.
All in favor?
The deal with the, uh, online land sale, you know, last year I put it off because I was not going to be here to meet with them, and they're going to come, but I'm trying to hold them off until the second or the fifth week. If that's going to be, okay.
Are you saying you really don't want to do it, or you're saying?
I'm letting them come and make the presentation, right down my land sale is, is okay. I mean, I, I've kind of got it. I, I've got it, I think down to a streamline, I do have some problems, I'm not saying I don't, but it's a lot better than where we came from, you know, we've got the tough skin on, we tell them what we want to do, and we do that. I do get told a few times I'm going to get sued for what I'm doing, but it's okay. Okay, so that's, that was that one, and the last one is this.
Oh, um. Hi, here. We submitted our proof of claim, we're an unsecured creditor, uh, and we got.
Twenty-seven, eighty-eight.
Or denied.
Very small one.
Which is kind of.
Twenty-seven, eighty-eight, twenty.
Twenty-seven, five?
No, two thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents.
But the good news, the silver lining, if you will, is that we got the hospital back, so.
We got the building.
Right.
We're gonna work on the rez hopefully.
The city got the building, let's make that clear, not the county.
Correct.
My question to you is, what, what did you want to do? Pause in general county and, and just do it as miscellaneous to Devon?
Beautiful. Simple.
So that'd be a system one, isn't it?
I know she won't give her that five.
But you know, in the chapter eleven, as an unsecured creditor, uh, you will get pennies, pennies on the dollar. So it, you know, it is what it is, I'm, I'm really, really nostalgic.
Maybe we got anything.
Well, I was too when I opened it, so I was like, okay, all right. I know it's not enough, but it's okay, we'll take it with us. And next hour I got this.
Thank you, ma'am. I will be down.
Yes, you did it, because I don't want your name to be on here next year. Because you didn't sign. Thank you.
Still have anything for us?
No, sir, I'm just enjoying life and learning.
Kind of administrative.
If you look at your notes I gave you, it's time to replace our representative on Twin District's Workforce Development Area Board. Kenny has been serving, I need a motion to appoint someone to.
You want it.
You have to tell your name?
I mean, I will, but do y'all know what this is before you, you, you understand what?
I don't know what it is.
That's the board that, uh, we meet, heard about by the next meeting, it's February twenty-fifth, Habsburg. This is workforce development, it works with, Dr. Stu is familiar with that. Did you ever serve on the board, you know, Dr. Stu?
I did, I did, when I first got to.
And it's looking workforce development as far as training, employees, uh, just say, miss, like they knew how the land grew up there.
I vote to.
Yeah, uh, that, that's what this does, uh, it's dislocated workers, uh, just a thankful lot of business, uh, they have to find jobs, uh, work closely with the wind centers, the, uh, youth.
Sound like you're one.
What I've been trying to do with this organization is try to get us some, some youth programs. And I mean, every week we go, that's something that I pretty much, uh, I bring up. We don't have an office in New County, but there's an office in Scott County that's trying to help us assist us with that, and I've been to them quite a few times, but their problem was, they couldn't find, in Scott County, they couldn't find youth that was willing to work and do the requirements. And so I said, well, let's see, can we bring in New County? That's pretty much what it does, deal with, uh, exactly what I say is workforce development, so, uh, real interesting, anybody interested, they could have.
I knew we, uh, reappointed Mr. Kenny Harris, who's the Twin District Workforce Development.
All in favor? Uh, Luke Ishi, I've, uh,
Midman Sittin?
Midman Sittin, he's on the other side of this board, uh, he's, he's up high, and I'm, I'm on that Eliobo, elected official, uh, engineer, the survey, what's his name?
Ricky Harrison?
Ricky Harrison, he's also serves on, on this board. As will be the son. What else you have, Steve?
County started collecting that one-dollar fee January the second, or, or Godspeed. New fund has to be set up for that, and I've got a new budget for that fund, we're required to do that for by the department, I need you all to accept this new fund budget.
I make a motion here, set a new fund budget.
Sir.
All in favor?
So that does not go into the general fund?
We had set up something separate so that it can be traced. Employee changes, Seber Williams beat two, full-time fourteen an hour. Terry Timm, Sheriff's Office, part-time eleven an hour. Tommy Boyd beat two, fifteen dollars an hour. Andrew Roberts, Sheriff's Office, full-time thirty-five thousand a year. James Addy beat five, full-time seventeen fifty-four an hour. Kenny Addy beat five, full-time fifteen dollars an hour. Jeffrey Todd Brown, Sheriff's Office, part-time eleven an hour. Jesse Tatum beat three, full-time thirteen an hour. Danny Lloyd, Sheriff's Office, part-time eleven an hour. Brian Summers, Sheriff's Office, part-time eleven an hour. William, Evan Kennedy, Sheriff's Office, full-time thirty thousand a year. Those were employee changes. Holiday, Governor has declared Monday, January twentieth, the holiday observance, Robbie Lee, Martin King Jr.'s birthday. Oh, Jason has prepared the new ambulance contract, the motion to exact contract, allow Kenny to sign.
All in favor?
And Charles Mould's called. He wants to throw minutes that he is closing Mcdeal Road to heavy haulers until June or May if it dries up, partly because of the, had a Pat Harrison project in there, Culver's not set up good enough yet.
That's when he closes every year?
Pretty much.
Make a motion, make a motion here, all Charles Lee and Ryan close Mcdeal Road to that time period in the year.
Sir. All in favor?
That's all I got.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Got anything, Jack?
I have some stuff that, for executive session, economic development.
Okay.
Just more of an update than, than anything, but.
Okay. Charles, you have, I don't know. Jack, you have a little thing?
Oh, let me take that back, can you? I would, at least by way of board minutes, I would like to recognize the fact that we had Judge Raymond Battle serve an unspice son, Judge McDonald filled that, and I would just appreciate it.
So if you want to send him a letter, what, yeah?
I could just send a letter signed by all of us, it'd be.
I guess I do that, well, I don't know if that's something I need to do here or not, but the railroad signs. The railroad.
Have you talked with Dwayne about any of that?
Really didn't give me much guideline.
Talk to these guys.
We're not gonna give you a guideline.
Yeah, that's what we're going to do.
He, uh, I, I did ask him about, uh, because I told him, I don't know what to do with the railroad signs, he'd say, well, there's some requirements, and I have them, but I haven't gotten them from him yet.
Here's my suggestion, we're going to be riding roads in the next probably thirty to sixty days, something we do once a year. And at that point in time, with that state engineer there, I think we'll.
Well, this is duty, they can be surveyed at times, since it's. And then put a time on it, I don't know.
But Bush, Bush will be able to give us specifics on that then. And he'll probably point them out if it's not done, he'll say, well, you haven't got to sign up here, so.
All right.
Right.
But we're gonna have to actually thank the crossing sign, or?
Our contractor.
Our contractor.
Um, some of these, some of the roads we just want to ride because some of these roads that, uh, these railroad tracks on, they're not in, on state A roads, I have some on dirt roads, I got, I mean.
Be hard for the paint to stay there.
Well, the water will take them, but you, I, I guess you could put up a sign.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's what I know is going to be required. Anything else?
I'm good.
I'm gonna have to go on to Brown's farm, Todd Brown's dad, what is his name?
Roger.
Roger Brown. We, uh, we have some water problems down in the. We, uh, we have some water problems down in the valley. Usually, we, used to, we would let it just sit there, and it would eventually drain down slowly. So we'll have talked them into cutting the ditch for it to go, instead of just sitting in the road, go up down to the property.
We've already done that.
And that was a mistake.
A ditch, the water cut the ditch.
Nice kitchen, all of the water, I mean, all of the water's coming in this turkey, and I mean, it just got trashed down the valley, we're not going there and not fixing it. That's going to be off, uh, be land road. Land road. When it gets dry enough, that's going to have a creek down there. That's all I have. Could we get a motion to... Close the gates and see if there's a segment of session necessary?
I'm on a motion.